I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome everyone to the Laverne Planning Commission Public Hearing at 6:00 PM on March 28, 2023. We have a quorum. Planning Commission Resolution 2023-01, a resolution to amend the City of Laverne Fee Schedule Regarding the Fee and Lew Option for Sidewalk Construction is found in Article 4, Section 4-108.5 of the Laverne Subdivision Regulations. If anybody would like to come up and talk on this item, please do so. As there appears to be no comments, this item will go on. Adjourned. I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome everyone to the Laverne Planning Commission Regular Meeting on March 28, 2023 at 6:00 PM. We do have a quorum. Our first item of business is to approve the meeting minutes from February 28, 2023, regular meeting. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Next item, site plan, Seventh Day Adventist Church requested by Asmatik, Inc., property located at 271 Jefferson Pike, Tax Map 18N, Parcel 18.01, R2 Medium Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Kentucky Tennessee Conference of Seventh Day Adventist, Inc. And we have a deferral on that item. Onto our next item.
Also, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, number seven and eight are also deferrals.
Very good. Thank you, sir. So our next item, recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman for subdivision acceptance, Lieutenant Frank Walkup, Phases 1 and 2, property located off Jones Mill Road, requested by Womble and Associates, R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District. Mr. Logan.
This is a request for subdivision acceptance at Lieutenant Frank Walkup Subdivision, and this is located on Jones Mill Road. And we'll go on and move here to the map. So this shows the entire development with the homes that have been built there, and the bottom of the screen is Jones Mill Road. And then zooming out, you can see the remainder of the area. So this is Jones Mill to Fergus Road intersection, and of course, this is Fergus running north there to the Dollar General and beyond. And this is the zoning map. This whole subdivision is zoned R1, which is low-density residential, that's single-family And this item has been here for a few months for subdivision acceptance, so I'll go ahead and turn it over to the city engineer, Mr. Lied.
We delivered them a punch list about six weeks ago. Called up Mr. Womble last week. He did not know the status of it, so they apparently haven't finished the punch list items.
So do we need to defer or since we're in meeting? Counsel.
I think you'd be more than welcome to do that if that's the board's decision.
Or make a motion to defer.
We have a motion to defer. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Next item, site plan, Dick Buchanan Trailer Storage, trailer storage in two new buildings of 9,100 and 12,000 square feet on 15.47 acres, requested by 615 Design Group, property located on Dick Buchanan Street, Tax Map 14, Parcel 50, I2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, property owned by CSJ and Associates, LLC. Mr. Logan.
This is a request for site plan approval at the Dick Buchanan Trailer Storage Site, and this site's approximately 15 and a half acres. The applicant is proposing two buildings on the site. Previously, they were not going to build any buildings. So on the screen, that image shows the entire site, and this is Carter Lumber to the south. And as you zoom out, you can see this whole area of Dick Buchanan Street running north to south. So most everything to the west side is developed, and this is one of the few tracks on the east side that has not developed. And the zoning map, this dark blue color indicates I2 zoning, which is heavy industrial. And here's a photo of the site. So this one, too, has been here so many times. One reason is because the applicant has changed their minds a lot on the building. So I'm sure everybody's seen this picture, but it's just a very flat site that's ready for development. I think...
One more.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah, so here's the site plan. They do now show, after several changes, two buildings. They're 9,100 square feet and 12,000 square feet, and still have trailer storage, as they've always shown, to the east behind those buildings. And the detention area has stayed the same, still shown in the same place, and because it's been here so many times and staff has reviewed it several months, there's not any technical comments remaining. So that completes the report. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Is there a representative for this project here this evening?
Commissioners, CJ Merle with 615 Design Group, 360 Q Creek Circle, Smyrna, Tennessee.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments?
In agreement with what staff said, happy to answer any questions that y'all may have.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, just one for staff. We had at the workshop, relocate the fire department connection to be at least 50 feet away from the building. Did that get corrected?
Yes, sir, it did.
And then I think from my comment on the workshop, we had discussion about the length of the, does the surface behind building, the first building?
First building?
Yeah.
And that should have been corrected, and I believe that is corrected on the site plan. If that did not get corrected, I apologize. That is certainly something that we can correct, and I would hope that we can correct that and show that to the city engineer without me coming back next month, if possible.
I mean, contingencies, we've been very, we kept away from for obvious reasons.
Yes.
You know, and we working off what's supplied by you, the applicant.
Yes.
And we discussed it, and I think you agreed to it. I mean, I understand.
I did, yes, sir.
You know, I just, it's a problem, but you know, I would like to see it corrected and have it on the plans personally. That's my comment.
Okay.
Any questions or comments? With that being said, Mr. Coats, you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for deferment for thirty days to correct the item, please.
We motion for deferment for the corrections. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We'll see you at workshop, sir. Next item, item number five, recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, rezoning of property requested by CDC, Inc., five acres, property located at 252 Hollendale Road, Tax Map 14, Parcel 23.2, current zoning district, R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District, proposed zoning district, R2 Medium Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Bola Gabrielle. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This request is for a rezoning of property located on Hollendale Road, 252 Hollendale Road. This is approximately a five-acre tract, and when they initially applied to the Planning Commission on January the 30th, they had submitted a concept plan that showed possible townhomes in the area. They indicated 12 to 16 townhomes, perhaps. That request did not survive and was changed from R1 to R2, and so that's how they are listed now on the agenda as R1 to R2. So that's from low-density residential to medium-density residential is the current request. Essentially, they are going from, if they were successful, they could move down to a 10,000-square-foot building lot instead of a 15,000-square-foot, which is required in R1. Property that borders this site to the south, and you'll see in just a minute, that property's R1, as well as the north side of the property. Let's move on to the maps here. This is their application, so this is the property outlined in blue and the existing home, which I believe there's a picture in just a moment. So of course, this is Hollendale here on the left side of the screen. So zooming out, now you can see Morningside Drive to the south, and then again, you can see all the development here to the west, and then a lot of R1 development to the east, and everything to the east side of Hollin, east side of Hollendale currently, everything to the east is R1. So on the zoning map, you can see what I'm saying. So this orange color is all R1, so you can see how expansive this area is. The only R2 would be on the west side of Hollendale currently. So this is the existing home, as you see it from Hollendale with the two dormer windows, and property sort of, it drops off, and the back of the lot is lower than the front side. There is another photo that shows the rear yard. So this is a rear yard. Looks like it's, there's not really any underbrush or anything of that sort. It's been kept up and mowed over the years. There are a lot of mature trees in the rear of the property, but that's what that side of the property looks like. So this was the concept plan submitted. Again, it's just a concept plan. It's not a plat, but this is at least what the civil engineer believes they might be able to fit on this property with the five acres they have, and that is keeping the existing home that's there already. So they're showing, more or less, if you count the existing home as Lot 1, they're showing nine additional lots for what they think they could build if they were to be And then this was submitted since the workshop, and one of the comments I know from the Planning Commission was to show the product that you might be building. So this was submitted by Mr. Gray, the civil engineer, and he asked that I include these in the presentation. And that's, right now, there's no comments, technical comments, because it's at the rezoning stage, so that completes the report.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
Just want to point out for the public as well as the board, in your summary, it's still listed as R3 rezoning from the last time. Looks like just the request portion was updated, so for anyone viewing it, this is to go from R1 Low Density to R2 Medium. Is that correct, Mr. Logan?
That is correct. R1 to R2, yeah.
Chairman, could I just get the applicant to come?
Please. Is someone for this project here? No one for this item in the audience, no applicant, Mr. Coats.
Mr. Chair?
Please, sir.
I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules to allow the public to speak.
Absolutely. We have a motion on the table to suspend the rules of the Planning Commission to allow the public to...
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. If there's somebody here that would like to speak on this item, we'd be more than happy to give you a couple of minutes and hear what you have to say, ma'am.
Thank you so much. If I may, I'll just read my notes so I'll stay on point, stay succinct. Two and a half minutes, if I may.
Well, let's start after name and address, if you don't mind, please, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Joyce Gamble. I live at 246 Hollendale Road in Laverne. I've lived there, own a house and six acres. I've lived there for 30 years, and I'm also a real estate broker and have been for 30 years, so I so acutely appreciate the value of zoning, how it affects property values negatively and positively. So I wanted, if I may, just offer my following reasons for my personal objections to the city granting the rezoning of 252 Hollendale Road from R1 to R2. As I said, my property consists of my home and six acres, and it abuts 252 Hollendale Road. I'm on this, as you can see from that map, I'm on the south side, and I have six acres, so my property extends about 100 feet beyond the rear boundary of 252. All the properties going north on Hollendale Road, as you also saw on a previous graph, are all large properties. They all consist of between five and 10 acres each for about a mile going north on Hollendale Road. So my contention is if R2 zoning is approved for just that one lot, it could set a precedent for these other property owners who might follow suit with similar requests. I don't think that's a good thing. Now, that entire stretch on the east side of Hollendale Road is not served by a public sewer. It is all private septic systems, and 252 was permitted for a three-bedroom home only in the beginning, when that was first bought and built. And there are two septic line easements on that property that are attached to that property, and if rezoning is approved and excavation occurs on that, it could compromise those septic line easements for other homeowners. And also, I also understand that if the rezoning is approved, in order to provide sewer service for that lot, they will, their plans are to excavate under Hollendale Road to tap into the public sewer system that serves Hollendale Estates. Also, I saw on the proposed plans, which you saw on the graphic where the lots were designed, that they are proposing to construct an interior road stretching from Hollendale Road all the way to the rear of their boundary line. This also means that that road will be constructed adjacent to my property line, my entire property line, the depth of it, and that's about 800 feet. I also would assume that some excavation for development might include blasting, especially toward the rear, where both of our properties sit on a lot of rock and sinkholes are not uncommon in that area. So that potential for damage to neighboring homes is a concern for me. If R2 zoning is approved and that five-acre lot will ultimately contain up to 10 houses, including the current dwelling, one other thing to consider is the addition of multiple vehicles where the overflow may be parked. Oftentimes, in densely built neighborhoods, vehicles wind up on streets or in front yards. And I mention this as a part of my concern about being next door to a property where every square inch is full of houses and vehicles. If I decide to sell one day, I consider my proximity to that as a negative. At the very, I'm almost there. At the very least, the magnitude of a construction project that huge will negatively impact the quiet enjoyment of my own home for a long time, and I would suspect other neighbors as well. So in closing, I would like to just leave you with one question to consider. Why would the city approve a rezoning plan that benefits only one property owner to the potential detriment of many property owners as far as nearby property values are concerned? I respectfully request your rejection of this rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please, sir. Name and address for the record, and happy to hear what you have to say.
Richard Harris, 131 Suncrest Drive. My property backs up to Ms. Gamble's property, and I agree with everything she just said, so I'm not going to repeat that. We moved to the area because it's rural. I've been there almost 30 years now, and I like the quiet setting. But to get to the technicals, there is a drainage system that runs between my property, natural drainage, between my property and Ms. Gamble's. It runs down all the lots on Suncrest, and that has increased, the amount of water that we get, stormwater runoff, has increased really over the past couple of years. Can't explain exactly what it is, but it did coincide with a lot of the work that's happened at the corner of Hollendale and Morningside, where that property has been excavated, and they're starting to put homes up there. As mentioned, we are below Hollendale, so anything that happens there, gravity is proven, it's coming our way. And when I first moved there 30 years ago, the water was no concern. Now it's getting to where it's within 10 feet of concern, and I think adding these hardscapes is only going to add more problems for me and the rest of our neighbors, because that water has to go somewhere, and downhill is its only option. And so that is my concern. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this matter? With that, I will consider it closed. And questions or comments from the board? Make a motion? Just, well, we will zoom back to the normal rules of the Planning Commission. Thank you, Mayor. And questions or comments from the board? Discussion? With that, we'll entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion.
I'll make a motion for an unfavorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
Motion for unfair recommendation. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We'll be sending a non-favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Next item. Item number six, first item under New Business, site plan, 5450 Murfreesboro Road, new retail building totaling 11,550 square feet on 1.53 acres, requested by Huddleston Steel, Inc., property located at 5450 Murfreesboro Road, Tax Map 18B, Group E, Parcel 3, C2 Highway Service Commercial Zoning District, property owned by FHMY Realty Investors, LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This request is for site plan approval at 5450 Murfreesboro Road. The applicant is proposing to build a retail building that would comprise 11,550 square feet, and this property is in the Murfreesboro Road overlay district, and therefore, they have to comply with the regulations of the overlay district, which include brick and stone, as well as there can be no metal on the building. Looks like they are complying with that in their architectural elevations. I'll move to the map. So this property remembers very wide, but it's not deep at all. There is a billboard currently on the property, you can see here with the shadow. This is the south side of Murfreesboro Road or opposite the side of Walmart. There is a business adjacent that sells these small sheds and buildings, so that's the immediate neighbor to the southeast. And if you zoom out here, so this is the railroad track to the south, and again, Murfreesboro, and you're almost to Walmart, it's just off of this image to the right. And the zoning map shows the red parcel, so that's C2, and everything on this side of Murfreesboro Road is C2, which is commercial zoning. And this is a photo. I think somehow it's cut it off in this presentation, but this is the business anyway that would be to the south and east. So as you're looking at the lot, it's here to the right of the screen in this area. It's just a flat, grassy area. Moving on to the site plan, this shows the entire site. So this is Murfreesboro Road at the top of the screen, and they've built the building to be very kind of linear to fit into that wide lot, and they do have parking areas on both sides of the building. That hasn't changed since the initial stages. They've always shown the two parking areas. They have an ingress egress here off Murfreesboro Road, and then they have three lanes on the far east side of the property. And one comment from the workshop was to line up, was to shift these three lanes down so they would line up with the median break. So they have done that since the workshop. The Materials Board is at the podium, and this is the same Materials Board that they submitted last July when they initially came to the city.
Mr. Coleman, if you just hold that up for everybody to look at, we don't have to pass it all the way down through. Thank you. Is everyone satisfied with that?
Once I'll drop it.
Thank you. My apologies, Mr. Logan. Please go ahead.
Thank you. So the technical comments, it has been here at the Planning Commission for a few months. So there were several in the beginning, but those comments have been taken care of, and now there's a remaining comment that engineering department would handle, but that has to do with some turn lanes, so I'll turn that over to Mr. Lied. Thanks.
Could you go to 80 of 148?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Logan.
There we go. Okay. There. That one, okay. The big issue of the sewer was worked out. Public Works has signed off on it, and everybody's in agreement on that, so they are taking a forced main sewer to the east and tying into a public sewer, as was requested. There was an unsolicited change that I've asked the engineer to discuss with y'all. Previously, there was a 60-foot D cell lane on the southbound Murfreesboro Road there and another one there. Those have been removed. And a 80-foot left-turn lane on the northbound Murfreesboro into the grocery store area has been added, so I have asked their engineer to discuss that with you, their reasoning.
Thank you, sir. Is this the only technical item? No. We could have the engineer come up and name and address for the record.
Chris McGuire with Huddleston Steel Engineering, 2115 Northwest Broad Street, Murfreesboro, Tennessee. The reason for the change in the D cell lanes is when we had our original workshop, I guess, back in October, November of last year, I believe. It's been a little bit since we were here last, but one of the comments in the workshop was that they would like to see D cell lanes as what was required for Washtopia and Walmart. I misinterpreted what the comment was and interpreted them as two D cell lanes on our side of the property, when in reality, I believe the request was for one within the median. The reason why I feel, and I agree with that comment, the reason I feel that it's more necessary up there is northbound traffic does not have a shoulder to slow down on and get out of the way. They would have to slow down in traffic and then get in the median to cross. Putting it where we have it will currently give traffic a way to get out of the way, slow down, and safely traverse across Memorial.
Murfreesboro Road.
Excuse me, Murfreesboro Road. So that was the reasoning for the change, and the lengths we have made match the D cell lanes for Washtopia. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Questions or comments? I suppose that's reasonable.
So just some history on the numerous properties that I've seen come up on Murfreesboro Road. Murfreesboro Road, as we know, is not a city road, it's a... It's a, the state controls that. We have asked numerous times through the years to have the extra relation lanes put in coming towards Smyrna from Nashville and T-Dot just turned them down. If you look at all the buildings up there, you don't see one. So when I spoke to the engineer, you know, we were referring to the text relation lane in the center median, which is what's been requested, has been done by three, four other applicants through the years. So this meets the intent of what we were trying to do and been consistent. As far as moving the center turn lane, which was my request, I'm glad they've done that because it makes more sense. And so, you know, my other comment is for the staff, there were originally twenty-seven items. So they've all those twenty-seven have been addressed. Make sure that there's a large list of addressed.
Painstakingly, yes, sir.
And the other comment I had was that the sidewalk in front of the strip mall itself was five feet. And I didn't feel that two people, you know, with a family or elderly could cross that. And so you have increased that to six feet. Am I correct? Yes, sir. That's my comments.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman. First question's going to be for the fire marshal. Mr. Brinkley, as far as the north side of the building, there's no fire lane there. Would you recommend one being there? There's one on the south end, but as we know, fires can happen on either side of the building and where y'all are needed is where you're needed.
Yes, sir. When we reviewed the site plan, the parking lot area, the spacing of it would be adequate per what the code requires. Obviously, you know, we always want as much parking as possible, but what we can enforce legally has already been enforced.
Okay. So, and mind you, I wasn't here for the workshop, but that's one thing I would ask for y'all to have a look at is seeing if parking can be moved back or expanded to allow a fire lane on that side of the building as well. Because if you have a small restaurant in the general retail and there's a fire, well, they're trying to get around as quickly as they can. And this just provides them with more space. I don't think this was brought up at workshop, but the double dumpster location that you've got on the south side, with other applicants going on Murfreesboro Road, we've asked that they have doors that screen that visibility. And it's been a while since we've had someone from Murfreesboro Road, but that's another request that I'd like to see on there that screens that away from the public. And they're already going to be going past it to get to the, what this concept shows as a grocery store.
We do have a dumpster enclosure detail which has a facade to match the exterior of the building along with a gate.
Along with?
Yeah.
Does that need to be shown on here?
I believe it's on the detailing.
On the detail sheet.
Not it should.
Eighty-three of one hundred and forty-eight and it shows it just as open.
It is not.
On the detail sheet?
Correct. It's, no. Bring up eighty-eight of one forty-eight.
I apologize. It is not. But what that is our intention is I've got a detail which will call for facade to match and doors on it as well with bollards. So I can add that too.
I say similar to the prior applicant, we're not big on contingencies. We like it all in the packet at the time.
Considering the laundry list we've had, we're getting through it.
I'm more than happy to work with y'all on that. And I know my applicant is as well.
So with that, unless anyone has any other questions, I'll make a motion to defer to next month.
Motion to defer. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We'll see you at workshop. You know what needs to be corrected and save us some time.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
On to our next item. Item number seven is deferred and item number eight, Mr. Logan?
That's correct.
We'll move on to item number nine. Final plat lot forty-eight, Morningside Acres, two residential lots on five point two three acres requested by Chaplain Dean and Associates. Pardon the mispronunciation. Property located on Meadowlark Lane, tax map thirteen H, Group A, Parcel Thirty-four. R one low-density residential zoning district. Property owned by John and Tommy Bamfield. Mr. Logan?
Thanks. This is a two-lot plat on five point two three acres. there's no new infrastructure with this plat and there's no new roads that are proposed. They're just subdividing. So this on the screen shows the property. And it's a, you remember from the workshop, it's a very deep piece of property, goes far back. And the existing home is here in the front. And then this is a pool in the back. And then there's some other storage buildings or sheds to the rear. So this shows the whole area. Go back. Okay. So now this shows it outlined in blue and you can kind of see how it fits into that whole neighborhood. So this is the zoning map. And this is all part of that large orange area that we had earlier tonight for one of the items. So larger area of R one, low-density residential. And they have five point two three acres. And this is the plat. And you can kind of see that. So these are the buildings to the rear and then coming south toward the road, see the existing home. For the newly created lot, they have fifty feet of road frontage. And then that extends back until it opens up into the wider part at the rear. And there were a few technical comments at the workshop, but those have all been taken care of. So there are no outstanding comments on this one. Thank you.
There's one thing I'd need to say that we did have an outstanding comment on the owner's certificate, and it's not on this drawing and that is my fault. They did, it is on there. We do have it. We just got the wrong drawing up in front of you and I apologize.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other questions or comments on this item? Entertain a motion.
Make a motion, accept or submit it?
Motion to accept. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? We'll go Mayor on that one. I heard him first. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item. Item number ten. Concept plan Mission Hills apartment site, three hundred and twenty-four units on twenty-three point seven eight acres requested by S E C. Property located on Waldron Road, tax map twenty-nine, parcel twenty-two point zero two, R three high-density residential zoning district. Property owned by John M. Gillian Living Trust. Mr. Logan?
So this is the Mission Hills apartment site. And you probably remember from two weeks ago that the entire concept plan for the hundred and twenty acres was here at the planning commission last July of twenty-twenty-two. Since that time, they've decided to go with apartments on this section of the concept plan. So that's why they've resubmitted. This property is located along east of Waldron Road and it's about a half or three quarters of a mile north of Blair Road. And their plan is to construct three hundred and twenty-four dwelling units on this property. And the map shows the huge hundred and twenty acres in its entirety. It's a lot of wooded land, just very small part here with the pond that's not wooded. But this part of the concept plan is what we're looking at tonight. So closest to Waldron Road is what we're concerned about tonight. And zooming way out, you can see I twenty-four to the northwest here comes into view. And then this is the Part twenty-four site being developed by Panatoni. That's immediately to the east of this site. I'm sorry, it's not Part twenty-four. It's High Point twenty-four by Panatoni. And zoning map, this is all green, which indicates R three high-density zoning. And then here's a photo that just shows Waldron Road and some of the equipment that was out there when the concept plan came through last July. So here's the full set of plans submitted. Doesn't want to. I don't think it likes the huge set of plans, but anyway. So this is the apartment site, and I'll try to zoom in. So this shows the apartment site as it's being called with the various buildings. These would all be three-story buildings. the clubhouse and amenity center would be located close to Waldron Road. That's it down here in the bottom left. There is ingress egress, of course. I think this is the same one from two weeks ago. And then they've added a right out only to the north of that. Try to zoom in some more. So that's that right out. And then Vanguard Drive would be the main thoroughfare to bring you into the single-family portions of this project. And there were I can't remember if this is the second month this has been here. There were more technical comments, but those were resolved and all that was remaining was this ingress egress.
If you go to the next page though, I think. Okay, yeah. It's just, where are you? Okay, if I could have the pointer. There was a technical comment regarding the traffic impact study. They provided that. It stated at the time that left turn lanes were called for. However, they were not going to put them in due to the South Waldron Road widening. Mr. Taylor and I were kind of back and forth on some wording on that. And they have added a note here that says if the, they won't pull any certificates of occupancy until either the South Waldron Road project is underway in this area or they have their turn lanes in, which I felt was the appropriate response. And that is in writing on the drawings.
Very good. Do we have any questions or comments on this item?
Got questions for the applicant for good, Mr. Chairman.
If you would please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. Matt Taylor of S E C, located eight five zero Middle Tennessee Boulevard, Murfreesboro, Tennessee.
So if you would just explain the call it crash gate there, how that's going to function with residents there in the Walnut Hill area?
So we've called that out to be an emergency access only. And so typically those would operate in the Yelp mode. We would coordinate that with the fire department so that, you know, or and the police department for that matter, you know, whenever they're coming down the road, it picks up that, I guess it's a tone of some kind, and it will open for them. It will not be open for the public. You know, if you live inside of building five, you can't go out that way. So it would only be for emergency vehicles.
So you moved the dumpster from the area? You moved that away from that entrance?
Yes, sir. We took it and we moved it to the northeastern portion of the project, just north of building eight and to the east of building three.
And the addition of the entrance, that is for exit only, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And so will this be a planned gated community? Is that the intent?
Yes, sir.
Am I right? Am I seeing two tennis courts there at different locations?
So those are, we've got some pickleball courts. I don't think there are tennis courts. We've got pickleball courts. We've got one that is between building six and building seven. And then got one that is to the east of building eight.
Mr. Logan, there's enough car parking spaces here, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. There are.
Swear, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Comments, Mayor?
I had spoken with you about some, as far as potential changes by phone since I missed the workshop.
Yes, sir.
Were y'all able to incorporate any of those?
I know that we moved, I think one of those was the compactor move, which we talked about at the workshop with the rest of the planning commission members. We also talked about the connection to Walnut Ridge Drive and how that was going to function. And so the planning commission desired that to be an emergency exit only or entrance. And then I think the only other thing that you've asked was to evaluate maybe a connection back up to Vanguard. I was under the impression that you discussed that with my client a little bit more. And I think with the exit only onto Waldron, we felt like that kind of counterbalanced that.
Well, I'm thinking for emergency purposes is, you know, allows that more connectivity, even if it's an emergency situation. And then also was just about landscaping up front.
Yes, sir. And we did add that. And I think if you look on C one point oh, I've tried to add a cross hatch up there and called out that that would be a heavily landscaped area. We would give a very detailed landscape plan with the site plans in the middle. We want that area to be just as nice as you all. It's our front door. It's our sales entrance. Absolutely.
And our, since I know they're here, the, since Mr. Pierce and Mr. Rasmussen are here, about that thought about connecting over with Noel Wood.
Terry Rasmus, N B R S, two thousand Mallory Lane, Franklin.
Thanks, sir.
We would, because of it being completely gated, we would prefer not to connect to the single family in any way, shape, or form. We'd rather have everything come out to Waldron. It's really what the market wants these days and that's our preference.
Any other questions or comments? We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept or submit it?
Motion to accept or submit. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item. Item number eleven. Recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, ordinance to amend Article Five, Section five point zero five five of the Laverne zoning ordinance regarding floodway and flood fringe districts. Mr. Logan?
Thank you. This is a resolution that was put together to aid in changing the sidewalk fee and lieu option that's currently available.
Wrong one, Mr.?
Oh.
Jump up one.
Number eleven, sir.
That's even better news because that's not me.
Actually, that's Randolph.
Generally, to kind of quote Randolph from last meeting, this is really just an update of our existing ordinance based upon the new FEMA maps. And it simply changes out the maps for the appropriate ones.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mayor?
And this maintains the eligibility for the National Flood Insurance Program as well.
Right. Correct.
Any other questions or comments? Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to give a favorable recommendation.
We have a motion for a favorable recommendation. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number twelve. Planning Commission Resolution twenty-two twenty-three dash zero one. A resolution to amend the City of Laverne fee schedule regarding the fee and lieu option for sidewalk construction is found in Article Four. Section four dash one zero eight point five of the Laverne subdivision regulations. Public hearing will be held prior to the meeting at six P M. on March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, which has been done. So, Mr. Logan?
Thank you. So this resolution would raise the sidewalk fee and lieu option that is currently available to some projects. It's not available to many. But when it is available currently, it's the planning commission allows an applicant to do it. It's $10 per square foot for the sidewalk fee. And this would raise that from $10 per square foot to $12 per square foot for all sidewalk and sidewalk sections. So this document is just necessary for the Planning Commission to make that change.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments?
I have a question on the, is the width of the sidewalk determined to be six feet? Is that the standard width?
There, the widths vary depending on the major thoroughfare plan. So some streets are wider than others.
Or sidewalks?
Mm-hmm.
So it could vary, I guess, sir. Any other questions or comments?
Make a motion to accept or submit it.
We have a motion to accept or submit it. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And our final item, bonds and letters of credit. Ma'am?
Hey, Mr. Chairman. Everyone should have the updated bond list in front of them. And everything is up to date until June of this year.
Perfect. Thank you. If there's nothing further, we'll call the meeting adjourned.